Hi, and welcome to the Board Wrap-Up for February 2015. The Ponca City Board of Education met for their February Board Meeting. We're going to talk with Superintendent Dr. Pennington about that Board Meeting. But if you've been paying close attention, and I know you have out there, several times in the last year, Dr. Pennington has talked about the funding formula for schools across the state of Oklahoma. And if you listen closely, Dr. Pennington, you said that it was not right. There was something wrong, and you knew what it was. And sure enough, the past two weeks, the state has admitted there was a mistake.
Right.
If you could, talk about that and how much it means to our Ponca City schools.
You know, it's like anything else with the funding formula. Some regards, it's simple, but the explanation's complicated. And the way that folks out there need to think about it is that, and you know, most of us pay our property taxes, and we don't think about how that works. But what the process is, is the assessor goes out and they look at your home, or your business, whatever it is, and they determine what the value is. And then, in Oklahoma, you apply what we call an assessment ratio to that value. So, for example, if you own a $100,000 house, and the assessment ratio's 11%, so the actual, when it comes time to tax that property, it's taxed, the taxes, the mill levies, which are your taxes, are applied, not at $100,000 value, but at $11,000 value. So the assessment ratio really reduces the market value of your property, I guess is the best way to think about it. In the school funding formula, when we talk about property taxes that school districts receive, we have three categories of taxes. We have real property, which is your home, land and things permanently attached to it. Then we have what is called personal property, and that is commercial personal and ag personal. And then the last area is public utility. So, the railroad, that occasionally, when we're filming this segment, the train will go by, and we, you know, maybe, I'm sure the viewers can hear it. The power lines, not necessarily for us, because we have municipal power, but the telephone lines, cell phone towers, those kinds of things are public utilities. Back when our funding formula was created, and the decision was made that we were going to equalize funding, and that meant that the state was going to use state dollars to supplement what local communities could not raise, one of the first questions was, well, how do you keep the counties from gaming the system? So, I mean, if you think about it, if the state's going to send you dollars because you don't have enough local money to support your schools, then what's to prevent the county from manipulating the system in such a way that they have less county dollars, so they get more state dollars? And so that's when some laws were passed back in the early '90s, and those laws did a couple of things. First of all, they established baseline assessment ratios. You couldn't have a situation where K County had an assessment ratio of 5%, and everybody else had an assessment ratio of 11%. And also, you couldn't go to 25 or 30%. What some counties used to do is they would value a piece of property very low, and then they would have a high assessment ratio, and their argument was, well, we're getting the same amount of money out of that property that you are in another county with a higher value. And the state said, no, we're not going to play those games. So they established the assessment ratio should be 11% on real property and personal property. And then they said that, you know, for those counties that they keep those assessment ratios above 11%, we're going to let that money stay in your local school district. Whatever you generate for being above 11%, it gets to stay in your local district. And so that money that's above 11% that we collect, if you're, so for example, in K County, on the real property side, our assessment ratio's 11%. On the personal property side, it's 14%. And so that 3% difference, that money, since 1992, was supposed to stay in the budget of the Ponca City Public Schools. In other words, while the state is equalized, everybody has the same dollar amount per child to spend, if your assessment ratio's above 11%, you can have a little bit of extra On the real property side, the state, from 1992 on, always got it right. If you were in a county with an assessment ratio above 11%, whatever you generated above 11, you were keeping that money locally. But they never applied that to the personal property side. And we don't know why, we don't know who made the mistake, there's no way to determine what happened. When I became superintendent here in 2004, because I'd been in K County, I knew our assessment ratio on personal property was above 14%. And so, you know, I got here, the first year I saw our estimate of needs, which is the document we get from the county, which tells us the value of all the property that we have, whether it's public utility, personal, or real. I saw our personal property value, and in our county, that's very high. And so, you know, I assumed that we had some additional dollars, and when I started to check into it, we didn't have it. Or at least, we couldn't see it. We couldn't look at that and say, because it looked to us like we were being charged for all of our revenue. Called the State Department, and at that time, was told, no, we get that money from the tax, we get those numbers from the Tax Commission, I assure you, they're right, they know what they're doing, you're just, you guys just aren't looking at this the right way. So, you know, I mean, when people who you trust at the State Department tell you that things are going, doing things the right way, you just go on. And we went on with other things affecting our schools, and every couple of years, so I'd call them and say, you know, I just, it just doesn't, it's not right, there's something, we're not seeing those additional dollars. Finally, in 2013, we became convinced that this thing's not right. And so we began to push the envelope and not call once a year, or once every couple of years, we started calling once a month. We're just sitting, right, show us, there ought to be a way for you to demonstrate to me that you're not, that you're not charging us for all our avalorm revenue, because it looks to us like you are, there should be a significant amount of money still staying here in the local district. We finally got, made a phone call and got in contact with somebody at the State Department who'd listened to what we were saying. They actually asked us to send them a copy of the law. We sent them our numbers, and they basically said, yeah, you're right, the formula's not being applied correctly. Then we had to get to the Tax Commission to figure out why it wasn't happening. And they just never did it. When they read that law, for the people in the department that were in charge of that today, it was the first time they'd seen it, which kind of surprises me. I would think that part of what the Tax Commission would do would be review the laws of the state of Oklahoma and make sure that you're collecting taxes or enforcing the law the way it's written, but that's just not the way it worked. We were told it was going to be fixed, then we found out in December it wasn't going to be fixed. I think I talked about that last month, that we then got authority from the Board of Education to file a lawsuit at that time. At that time, then, State Superintendent Janet Borese came out and said, you know what, we're going to fix this. And so we've been waiting for, really until two weeks ago, to get it fixed. So the bottom line in all that is, is we're going to have, we're going to, there's, we're going to have, we're going to keep $900,000 of this year's revenue here in K County, that in the past has been taken and distributed to other school districts across the state of Oklahoma. So, we have $900,000 additional dollars. And depending upon what happens with the value of property on the personal property side, and basically, we're talking about commercial, personal, and ag personal, then we should have those additional dollars somewhere around $900,000 a year of additional money every year from this point on. So, you know, we're excited about that, because it gives us a chance to do some things. We'll still get our, we'll still get the formula dollars, just like every other school district in the state. This is just extra money, it really is extra money, because not everybody in the state gets it. And we get it because our assessment ratio on that category of property is above 11%. And as long as that ratio stays above 11%, we will continue to get those additional dollars. So, you know, it's a big deal for us. I mean, $900,000 is a lot of money. And now, we just have to figure out, you know, what's the best way to spend that? What's the best way, what can we do with it to really have an effect on instruction? To make sure that our kids have every opportunity they can to be as successful as they can be academically.
Is it fallback money? Is it, we save this money? How do you perceive that this money is going to be spent for our school district?
Well, our intention is to spend it. We already have a fund balance, we already have a carryover that's based upon that when we look at the state aid money that we get, our regular budget, you know, we think we're financially safe there. Our intention is to spend the money, honestly, we're probably not going to get it all, we're probably not going to spend it all this year. There may be a few things that we go out and purchase that are one-time items. What I've been doing is I've been going around to faculty, having faculty meetings, and talking to staff about the money, and asking them to work with their building principals to generate some ideas. You know, what do you think, what, at your side, at your building, you know, what do you think you need? Do you need additional counselors? Do you need behavior therapists? You know, do you need math tutors? Do you need reading specialists? I mean, what do you need at your building that we can use this money to hire those folks, to provide students with that additional support? What we're not going to do with this money, I mean, I say not, I mean, you know, it can all change, but my initial thought is, is that we don't put that money into salaries. And the reason for that is, first of all, $900,000 is a lot of money, but when you divide it among 800 people, it's not that much. And that's how many employees we have, so, I mean, every little bit helps, and I understand that. And there may be some things we need to do, you know, as we look, especially at support salaries. We don't pay our support salaries, or not where they need to be. Maybe we, maybe help that a little bit, prop that up a little bit. But I don't think so. From my perspective, the salaries and how we structure our salaries, we have to do that on the money that we generate through the formula, and this money is extra money. So what gives us the biggest bang for the buck? What can really inspire students? What can really drive learning? What can really help students close academic gaps? Those are the things we're looking for. You know, we know that some of our children, the biggest issue is behavior. You know, they're, for whatever reason, they don't have, they've not learned at home how to control their emotions, how to control their anger. So, you know, we have to work with them to help them learn to do those things. Obviously, that takes a lot of time out of classroom teaching, so maybe, you know, I think that's something. We have had a discussion about reduction of class size for our early childhood kindergarten, first grade students. We think that that's something that we probably really ought to look at. You know, the reality is this, the reason that we have high class sizes at the elementary level is because of the budget cuts that we've taken. Because the state has not restored the spending that we lost in 2008. People have heard me say this before, the cut in funding from the state of Oklahoma to Oklahoma school districts is 22.8% less than it was in 2008. That is the largest percentage cut in the United States. It's been that way for the last three years, it continues to be that way. Even though we've had a very strong economy for the last three or four years, there's been no effort at the state level to replace the dollars they took away in 2008. That's why our class sizes are high, that's why we've eliminated programs. And we have to, and we will not solve our class size problem, we will not be adding programs back until the state restores that spending, until they restore those dollars so that we can count on that. You know, the thing about this money is that it's not, it's not money that you can necessarily count on to be there forever. And the reason for that is, is because that assessment ratio, that 14%, is at the whim of the assessor. The K County assessor could decide tomorrow that she wants to lower that ratio to 11%. If she does, we lose all that money. I don't think our assessor's going to do that, but that doesn't mean an assessor 10 years from now doesn't do that. So we have to, we have to be careful that we don't say, okay, this dollar, we can take this money and fill the budget holes that we've taken. And I think we could do that, that gives us a false sense of security. And so we have to be engaged at the state level, we have to keep, we have to keep our teachers engaged, and our parents engaged, that we need to restore funding to Oklahoma schools. And that's just flat not happened yet.
That's the good news. We do have some bad news to talk about, and that is Governor Fallon talking about a giant budget deficit as the legislature goes through their first week of this session, a giant hole in the budget.
You know, it's extremely disappointing, and it is, what makes it even worse is that it is self-inflicted. You know, we have, we've made it, we have tried for the last four years, since the legislature was taken over by the Republican Party in all aspects of state government, the executive and the legislative branch, we've been playing with this idea that if you cut taxes enough, that all you got to do to ensure economic prosperity is to cut taxes. And, you know, the governor and legislative leaders have been touting for the last few years that we saw an example of their policies working because the economy in Oklahoma was relatively good. You know, if you've been around as long as I have, and I've been a superintendent for 20 years, I've been involved in Oklahoma education, you know, since the early '80s, what I knew, and what I think anybody who was a thoughtful person knew, is our economy was better because of the oil, because we were in an oil boom. We've had those before. You know, we went through one in the '80s, some people may remember that, when we thought that the oil was always going to flow, and we could cut taxes, and we could do all these things, and we, you know, we, and we would never, the spigot would never turn off. And what we're seeing right now is that the spigot is starting to be turned off. Companies, because of the price of oil, companies are shutting rigs down, which affects not only the people who work for those who drill oil, but it affects all the industries that supply materials and equipment to the oil and gas industry. And, you know, we don't know how far the fall's going to be yet, but, you know, there, again, one of the good things about Oklahoma is we have a budget, we balance our budget. And so, you know, we're going, the governor's going to have to, unfortunately, reduce the budgets of all state agencies, and my guess is even including education. And we're going to take a hit in our revenues for this year. And, you know, what makes it bad is, first of all, half of this deficit, half of this $600 million is, 300 million of that is money they spent last year out of one-time funds. So when they put the budget together last year, they didn't have enough money to do it, to fund all the programs they wanted to fund. So rather than not funding some programs, or rather than not instituting a tax cut, not giving the oil and gas industry a huge break on gross production taxes, they decided to take money that was kind of in agency budgets, take this money out of the savings accounts, and put that into the general fund of the state of Oklahoma. And so it allowed them to spend dollars that were going to be spent one time, and that were going to be gone, and say, well, we have a balanced budget, and we can still cut taxes, and we can still do all these things, because that's what they want to do. And that was going to work, as long as the economy continued to grow, we had revenue, they would have probably been pretty easily able to replace that 300 million. But, uh-oh, Saudi Arabia decided to flood the market with oil, and here we are. So we've got that 300 million that we have to account for, and then we actually have probably $300 million less in revenue statewide than we had the year before. And if you didn't have this 300 million that you had borrowed the year before, you know, you could probably, I mean, you could take money out of the rainy day fund, and, because I don't think anybody right now thinks this recession that we're going to go through, this lack of, and I don't even know if it's going to count as a recession, because I think that the Oklahoma economy and other areas is strong, but this revenue shortfall we have could be just a one-year thing, a temporary inconvenience, so to speak. So, but, we just have to, you know, what, from my perspective, and again, I understand that I'm somebody that consumes tax dollars. That's what our industry does, that's what education does. We're a consumer of tax dollars. But the reality is, is we've had this group of folks in charge of the state of Oklahoma for the last five years, and they've been, they've done whatever, they've done everything they wanted to do, and everything they've done, they've told us was going to improve our economy, make it better, you know, lead us to this land of prosperity, you know, if you'll just do what we say that we need to do, someday you're going to have all the education funding you need. Well, you know, that's not happened, and it doesn't look to me like it's going to happen. And the sad thing about this is, you know, in the past, what would have happened, we had the recession in 2008. As soon as the economy got better, we would have restored education funding. And we would have, as quickly as we could have, the number one priority in this state would have been to get our schools whole, make them whole from the cuts we took in 2008. And so typically, what would have happened is, we would be looking at this shortfall, but we would be, we would be, we'd have filled our account back up, and we'd be taking out of the, out of that account that was full. But our account's already 22% less than what it was. So we're talking about an additional funding cut on top of the 22% cut we've already taken. You know, we're not, we're not starting back at zero, we're starting already in the hole by about, I think, I think the number is, I think state revenue, state allocations to school districts is about, I think, $230 million less than what it was in 2008. So we're already, we're going to be, we're just going to fall far behind. You know, we're going to be not at a 22% cut compared to where we were in 2008, we're probably going to be 25 or 26%. I mean, we're going to be at the top of the cut from a percentage-wise basis. We're not, right now, we're about two percentage points above Alabama. Before this is all said and done, we're going to be five percentage points above Alabama. And, you know, you have to just ask, when does it stop? You know, when do the people in the state of Oklahoma demand that we fund our schools? And I don't, and I, it's frustrating to me, because I know that, I know parents are frustrated, because I hear that all the time, why does my son or daughter have 25 kids in their second grade classroom? Why, you know, have we eliminated this program or that program at West, or at East, or at the high school? And people aren't happy about that, they don't know what to do about it. And we continue to have a state government that basically says, get used to it. And, you know, I don't think those people in Oklahoma City are bad-intentioned, but at least from my perspective, I think their priorities are all wrong. And, you know, it's one thing to have a theory, but when you see your theory is not in the best interest of the state, when do you backtrack and say, you know what, it doesn't work? I mean, do we have to go through 20 years, or 20, do we have to lose a generation of kids to a tax policy that says if you keep, if you cut taxes, everything will get better? At what point do we, do we say, you know what, that doesn't work? And, you know, it's extremely frustrating to me, and here's the deal, you know, I mean, I had one of those milestone birthdays last week. I'm now the big 6-0. And so, you know, I don't know how much longer I'll do this, you know, I may do it for five more years, I may do it for 10 more years, I may just, you know, I might walk in tomorrow and decide I'm done. But the reality is that these cuts, the cuts we've experienced for the last almost six years now, when you think about that, 2008, 2009, we're at 2015, you know? We've had six years of students that have not been able to go to school in a system anywhere in our state, where they've had funding anywhere close to what the students who went to school before them had. I think that's wrong. I think there's a moral imperative to fund our schools. And I just, it's just so disappointing to me that we're in this position. This year is the 25th anniversary of the, of our, I can't even think of the name of our initiative to fund schools.
10.
1017?
Yeah.
25th, 25th anniversary of 1017. And we are back dealing with the exact same things we dealt with when 1017 was passed. High class sizes, we don't have standards anymore, because we wiped them out, legislature wiped them out last year. High class sizes, no standards, 49th in the country, or 50th, they want we spend on our schools. You know, we're back exactly where we were 25 years ago.
And everybody was so excited when 1017 hit. I mean, I can remember the, almost the Mardi Gras atmosphere.
Because we, for the first time in state history, we, the public had stood up and said, enough is enough, we want well-funded schools. And then, you know, that, I don't think the public support everyone away. We just had Democratic administrations, now Republican administrations, that lost, that didn't share that vision with the people, because it was politically expedient to cut revenues. And so that's where we are. And it's sad, and I, you know, you know, what I've said to my viewers, if you've got children or grandchildren in the state of Oklahoma, look, this is, this is your, this is the future of your children that's at stake. And, yeah, we've got, we're going to have a little mini-crisis right now, we've got to get through this crisis first. But we have to have a change in this, in the attitude of this state. Or all we're going to do is continue to fall farther and farther behind the other states. And, you know, our economy, we're never going to get to where we want to be. So that transcends to this point. On March 30th, the PTA, state PTA has called for another rally at the state capitol. And last week, all the major education associations in the state endorsed it. We haven't decided yet what we're going to do in Ponca City, we have to discuss that. But it's a rally for public education. And it's once again, an attempt to go to Oklahoma City and drive the point home to our legislators, legislative leadership, and the governor, that education is the number one priority in this state, that having a well-funded education system is more important than tax cuts, that it's more important than roads and bridges, that it's more important than corrections. It's the most important thing we do. And that's not to say those things are not important. We have lots of priorities in this state, but we have to, we have to decide what is the most important thing, and we have to fund those things. And I know, I believe this, and, you know, maybe, maybe I'm an idealist, but I believe the better education... But I believe the better educated our students are, the better educated our children are, that the, the, that those educated children, the more education they have, the more money they make, the more they'll pay in taxes. That the better educated someone is, the less chance, less likely they are to go to prison. And if they happen to do something they shouldn't do, they're not going to stay as long as somebody that's not educated very well. They're going to get back out in the workforce and become taxpayers again. That the better educated people are, the more likely they are to be able to afford their own health insurance. You know, all those things drive the economic prosperity in this state. And, and if, and if we don't invest in this generation of kids that we have in school right now, I just wanted to, I, I just want the kids in Oklahoma today to have the same investment in them that my kids had. I mean, that's pretty sad that we're talking about the investing, just, just investing as much as we did the previous generation. But that's where we are. And so we're going to have a rally on the 30th. It's going to focus on three things. It's going to focus on assessment. You know, we need assessment systems that make sense. It's going to focus on a long-term commitment to improve the teaching profession. We cannot fix the teacher crisis. And we have a crisis in teachers in this state right now. We can't find them. You know, as I've been out telling staff, yes, I have $900,000 to spend that I didn't have two weeks ago. But if you told me to go out and hire 25 teachers, I'm not sure I can find 25 teachers. So we've got that crisis. We've got a crisis in, in how, in teacher respect and how do we respect the profession? So we've got to develop a plan and we have to look and say, where do we want to be five years from now? I'd love for this legislature to fill in the, the education budget and put us back to where we were in 2008, this session, but it's not going to happen. So we have to develop a long-range plan and get a commitment in place. And the other thing we have to do is, is because, you know, we live in a world of, we're reforming everything all the time. Our schools need to be better, but whatever reform we do needs to be an Oklahoma reform, not a Florida reform. So that's what the rally is going to be about. And, and you're going to hear me talk about it from this point on, but last year we had about 25,000 people. This year we need to have 50,000 people. It needs to be so large and so massive that the legislature gets a very clear message that we not only want to see something happen, but that we demand that our legislature, that our, that they, that they quit worrying about, you know, whether or not the watermelons are fruit. And whether or not you can wear a hoodie or not. And whether or not it's our right to be a Muslim in Oklahoma. You know, we need to put all that stuff beside and we need to address the serious problems of this state. We need to quit fiddling on the edges. We've got pieces of legislation, the state senate's going to vote on a bill Monday that will give a tax credit to somebody who wants to send their kids to public, to a private school. Why would we do that? Why would we take public dollars when we don't have enough public dollars and give somebody some money so they can send their kid to Heritage Hall or Monica Casino or Holland Hall or Cassidy or Bishop Kelly? Why would we do that? Or we get, why would we do that? It'd be, if we were flush and we had all the money we needed and you wanted to talk about that, you know, I'd still be opposed to it, but at least you could talk about it. But we don't have enough money now and we're going to take dollars away from public schools, from roads and bridges, from healthcare, from every place else that tax dollars go so that you can take your kid to a private school? I just think that's crazy. It does not make sense to me, but we're going to vote on it in Oklahoma because somebody in another state, you know, thinks that's a good idea. You know? And again, my guess is if you polled people in this state, you'd probably have 90% of them that said, no, I don't want tax dollars going to support private schools. But because we're disinterested and we're focused on the things, that kind of stuff happens. And, and we have to, it, it's time for the parents, grandparents, business people in this state to stand up to be counted for our public schools. And either we will or we won't. And if we don't, then 25 years now, you and I won't be talking about it. But there'll be somebody else sitting in this room that will be talking about, you know, why is our state, why are we 49th in everything? 49th in healthcare, first in the number of people we lock up.
Teen pregnancy.
Teen pregnancy.
It's all trickled down, isn't it?
Yeah, it all, it all comes back and, and, you know, people, again, I hear, I've, I've heard this my whole career, you can't throw money at a problem. I, I think we all understand that. But I don't know of very many problems that more money doesn't solve. You know, I've said this several times for the last few years and people are probably tired of hearing this, but you know what? I'm an Oklahoma State fan. Okay? I, I, I love my Cowboys. I know what Oklahoma State football was like before T. Boone Pickens gave the university $150 million. Don't tell me money doesn't make a difference.
Money helped, yes, uh-huh.
You know, now, you, did you have to have the right coach? Did you have to recruit good players? If you not, if you wouldn't recruit a good players and if you wouldn't have the right coach, then it wouldn't have mattered how much money you put in. But I promise you that you could have had the same coach we had, right? And we could still have Mike Gundy coaching, but without the money to fix the facilities to attract the players, we wouldn't be where we are right now. And so, you know, don't tell me money doesn't, doesn't make a difference. Because everywhere I look in the world, at whatever it is, if there's a problem, it generally takes money to fix it. So to think that that doesn't apply to education is ridiculous.
I, quickly, I wanted to give you a chance, is there something February meeting that you wanted to, to pass along?
You know, not really. It was a very, we had a pretty short meeting. We, the main thing we talked about was the money issue and kind of talked, and we talked about the rally a little bit at the end of the meeting. Basically, we just approved some contracts and, and then I've had lots of people ask me about the building on, on Grant. And just to kind of let folks know, we anticipate that we're going to move in over spring break. And we will have an open house before that. I'm not sure exactly what the date will be, so the community can come in and go through the building and see what it looks like. And yes, the tunnel is still open. It still is operational. I don't know, I mean, you know, we, I don't know if we'll let people go through the tunnel when we have that tour. You know, I think I could make a lot of money for the district if I charged people to go in and look at that tunnel. That seems to be, for anybody that's a alumni of Ponca City that went to East Middle School, I mean, that is realistically, that's probably the first question I get. Is the tunnel still open? Does it? And it is open and yes, we still use it. So, anyway, that's, all right.
Great, Dr. Pennington. A belated happy birthday.
Well, thank you very much.
And we'll look forward to talking to Dr. Pennington next month. For Chris Adams behind the camera. For Dr. Pennington, have a great week.